Plan and zoning commission meeting. We'll go right to our one and only item for tonight, the public hearing on the plan of conservation and development. The town planning zoning commission will receive public comment on the final draft of conservation development, season plan. Conservation development day, July thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Uh, the plan can be found in the uh link on the agenda. Okay, just a quick introduction, I mean, we this in plan of conservation development is the visionary plan. For the uh town of Fairfield, it first draft was brought was submitted to us. Uh, two summers ago, I don't know the exact date off the top of my head, um, we do have miss um, miss Harrigan uh had put together kind of um. Summary of that uh kind of where the dates and what we've done in between, I remember getting that out last uh March. I didn't ask her to update it for today, maybe it might be worth taking a look at uh if you don't mind between now and. Whatever our next time is with this, just to if there's any updates.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay, um, if you can update that, uh, that would be helpful, maybe our next uh meeting on this, we can just, we can at least have it prepared and available. Lot of time has been put into it between public interactions in the beginning. Public comment, we happened last year, we've had however many. Planning meetings with the commission, uh, we've gone through three drafts, I think, very least four drafts. Most latest, as I said, is July thirtieth of this twenty twenty five, and we are in our public comments for on that draft. And. We've had, as I said, a lot of public input. That's the backbone of this in a lot of ways with public seminars in the beginning, public comment last year. Uh, written submissions from various agencies, solicitations from us. So for now, we have right now, at least this. This draft, you have some people in person, I think there's some people online, so we'll just dive right into public comment. Uh, first come, first served, so sir, you look ready, run up.
Mr. Chairman, kind of a order request.
Sure.
Can we get a little summary of the changes that have happened since the prior draft before uh leading up to this? This is our quote adoption draft, I believe, the one that we're proposing that we re-adopt subject to any changes we might make after uh tonight's public hearing, but. Since it's been a year and we've had like four or five planning sessions, and I believe some changes have been typed into the new draft, would it be possible to give a summary of some of those? It's front of mind for us as well as the public. That might not be aware of these changes because you wouldn't know unless you watched all of our meetings.
Yeah, I mean, not really a point of order, I don't think, but I think that's something we can talk offline with staff to see what can be done.
I was thinking we could have it presented tonight as part of the presentation.
I don't think that's something we have, right now it's public comment. Normally, we've been doing three minutes for applications, but I think um let's see how long things go, uh certainly not too long, um, I'll keep a timing. I'll turn this over for three minutes, but considering the length of it, um, that will be very. Flexible, I guess, with timing, if it really starts to go, I may ask for anything to be done in writing. Uh, just like any other public comments, uh, if any member of the public wishes to submit something in writing. Depending on how late this goes, I'm getting the sense, maybe we won't go late tonight, maybe we'll allow public comment through the end of the week. Uh, written submissions like we've been doing, but let's see where we go with that first.
If I could clarify also, Mr. Chair, when when you go to the P O C D folder, the most recent comments are within a folder for um. The July thirtieth draft.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
No, I was just gonna just, it was his, but go ahead.
Yeah, no, no, go ahead, I don't want to defer, you're here, your your time.
Yeah, if you don't mind, just keep your write it down so you don't forget. Sorry, sir, go ahead, your time.
We can't stay within three minutes.
No, that's fine, I just were made, if you can just give me your name and address, please, um. Comments remain to the issue and off you go, sir, thank you.
Great, it's Herbal Island Cooler, uh eighty-three Spruce Street. With Fairfield Senior Advocates and the Affordable Housing Committee, but I'm speaking on my own tonight. Uh, first, congratulations to the commission on what I think is a fine document, thanks for your hard work in pulling this together. Most of my comments address the section, a community that is home to all. I think this section is a breakdown about lining the issues and the challenges and often directions, if not a roadmap for a solution. Sadly, Fairfield's become unaffordable for many. Not only more affordable housing, unquote, but also more budget-friendly homes. For those earning more than eighty percent of the area median income. And who desperately want to stay here, uh per census data, uh more than fifty percent of our renters and about thirty percent of our overall households. Our housing cost burden, that's per census data. We need more housing options. Uh, for seniors that wish to downsize, for millennials that wish to stay or work in Fairfield. And for a growing cohort of smaller households generally. Their unmeet, their unmet need exacerbates the already skyrocketing housing costs for others. Addressing that former group's needs, put open three and four bedroom homes for those requiring more space, uh including younger families. About eighty-five percent of Fairfield housing is single family. But in our changing world, people want more options. Uh, we need more multifamily housing, but we're not limiting that to twenty or thirty unit buildings. Also, that would include middle housing, so duplex, triplex, quads, up to eight units, we think of that as as middle housing. Of course, this is easier said than built or converted in today's costly environment. But their number features in this plan, one example is uh the conservatives suggested rezoning of some neighborhoods uh that could really help. For three and a half more years, our painfully earned A thirty G moratorium remains in place. We already know that some of the approved applications in the pipeline. Uh, will not be built, will not be built as proposed, and we can expect there'll be more of those as well. So to keep the moratorium, but more importantly, address the societal needs for housing. We need a full bu- we need a full toolbox of solutions. Zoning, inclusionary zoning improvements, reimagine parking and build out. Of the transit-oriented district and adjacent districts among these these uh these tools. Uh, please, please do everything you can to move this document forward expeditiously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask a question?
I know, normally we would let people just kind of speak and I'm not sure what specific.
Well, I was, it was about some of the data that was being referenced.
Census data?
Either be, you know, the the twenty ten, twenty twenty, for instance, or the twenty twenty one, yet the latest would be the latest ACS samples.
ACS being being.
American Community Series.
Is that the census?
This is, this is a, this is a, these are samples that are done uh of selective households on an annual basis. There are five-year summary, and so the results are averaged from that source.
And that is part of the US Census?
It's part of the census program, right?
So that gets updated more often than the census?
Exactly, it's updated every year, but it's a five-year average, five-year rolling average.
Are you submitting your comments? Would you be able to submit like the source data of that? Because we get this referenced a lot, and I never know where the numbers come from. I think it's also referenced in the draft P O C D, but that only talks about the census, it doesn't talk about the ACS, I don't think.
That's interesting.
You have to submit something.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thanks, everyone.
Yeah, first come, first served. Hi, we'll start with people in person, please sit back, uh, and then we'll go to the people. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Hallett, I live at six Summerville Street in Fairfield.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
I I've lived at six Summerville Street for thirty years, ever since I chased my wife up here from New York City, my family brought home here. Um, a couple of things, and I'll be as quick as I can and appreciate it all. First of all, about it being heard, I mean, just honestly, nobody has been to more meetings, has submitted more emails, have gone to more attendance than I have. And the public has not been heard, uh, it really. I don't feel we've been heard, and in fact, just as a point of reference, for the plan that was drafted and submitted, there's the section about public input where I was two years ago. When I went there and I jogged there in my running shorts. And to use me as an endorsement of the plan and public feedback is disingenuous. Because I was there saying that this plan needed a lot of work and that the needs of the community, the thing, the feedback from the community, the things about uh preserve the outdoors. Nature, the environment, all those things about Fairfield that people saw, I saw in the plan. None of that was incorporated into the final draft, it was ignored. And I said to Jim Went at the time, at that meeting. To his face, I said, how could you submit this with all this development in Blackrock, there's thousands and thousands of homes? With a one-lane road going in each direction, it's a nightmare, and I got the hands-up shoulder stroke emoticon. And I take that very seriously, that's a leader of our town and the head of planning and zoning gave me this. And so, said a lot. Alright, so anyway, in my problems or the things that I feel that we need improvement in the current plan. And a lot has already been covered that we've seen, a lot of them are the maps and the plans, the starting with the very first one, figure one, if you look at it, they have. Changed it and taken all the open space around from Fairfield, there is one section that's called developed, there's another one that's called suburban transition, which I'm not sure what that means. And then it has the open space being Easton, so if you want to see a tree, you have to go to Easton, Connecticut, this is figure one. That figure right there, and if you really do a deep dive into that figure, you'll see it was done by the B R B C, Bridgeport Regional Business Council in two thousand and fifteen. Alright, this is part of a concerted effort by the state to redefine Fairfield as a city, Fairfield is not a city. It is a large town with many neighborhoods, and they're trying to codify and change the the coding in Fairfield to define it as a city. So I reject that, that very first map for starters, going on to some of the other ones, the flood zone map, alright? Flood zone map, uh, what page is on? I'll show it to you on my phone, alright, right here on the left, there's a tiny little area down by South Pine Creek, which is listed as the floodplain zone. Okay, they are ignoring, and then for reference, they reference the two thousand and fifteen FEMA map, that's an eleven-year-old map. Right, coincidentally, we've had eleven years in a row of rising global temperatures, rising sea levels. We're using an antiquated map and they're ignoring global change and flooding. In order to suit development, I reject that, all of food one is in a flood zone, we know that. And we need maps in there that reflect the realities of current climate. It's not fair to have that in there. Same thing is true with group one, we look at the group one map, that is a seven-year-old map.
Identify where that is again, or or the number of the the figure number.
I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry. So you look at, it's the map of group one, and it's seven years old, and that's my major problem because it does not reflect any modern realities. Alright, and my biggest one that I have issue with. Is the redistricting, alright, there is a map now. This all goes back to two thousand, alright, they took. The map of Fairfield. That had, for instance, Tungus listed as the second town center, Tungus is listed as the traditional downtown, second downtown of Fairfield. And in many regards, is more Fairfield than anything, because that's where all the homeownership came with everybody that lived in Bridgeport and and had homes in Fairfield. They eliminated, Tungus is downtown, they eliminated. Blackrock, one of the most historic neighborhoods in all of Fairfield, it's gone from the maps and is replaced by the Commerce Drive area. Alright, Commerce Drive is fake, there's no such neighborhood, nobody ever said I live in Commerce Drive. It's all been created starting in two thousand by the state. To enable the housing and the development that they want there, so I'm recommending we remove that and we restore Blackrock, we restore Tungus. And eliminate this districting of Commerce Drive, there's other parts too that were limited, Grasmere doesn't appear here. Grasmere is a huge area, Tungus, Tungus is huge, Tungus goes all the way down from Blackrock Turnpike up to the hill where Chips is, and then back down to DeSanti Tire, that entire triangle is Tungus. So we, I want to fix all those maps, it's not fair for us to go forward with them. Alright, the big thing is about housing. I had a meeting, a one-on-one meeting with Bill Gerber, uh, December, right before the holidays. And we had a long meeting, other people were there, Chris Brown was there, Jen Carpenter was there. Tony Calabrese was there briefly. And we presented a plan for homes for everybody here in Fairfield, affordable homes that you would own. Okay, you can buy a home now, you can buy one on Amazon for ten thousand dollars, a nice one, you can buy tiny homes in living for five thousand dollars. The whole premise is to remove that and to provide anybody who wants one with a home. No mortgage, no credit check, no down payment. One area that we talked about extensively in doing was right there by Home Depot and um. And CVS right there, all that blight on the other side of the tracks around Ash Creek, and filling that entire area. With homes that you could buy, talking about a couple hundred in communities, this is very, very real. And it's nothing to make money, there's a whole concept with the Affordable Homes Association. Where people pay in and you pay a monthly fee and that's a savings account, you get that money back. Because we're not really giving them anything, you know, you're sort of selling them something that in reality is not really worth a lot of money, and it works, and it's a great plan. And the last thing that Bill said was, I love it, get some developers, and I want to move forward with this, I haven't done it till now because. I've run my own business, I've started businesses, and there's a huge difference between having something on paper and having something in reality, so we haven't moved forward, but I do want to move forward. And it's affordable homes for everybody, and it's an answer to the state for all those statutes that are in there and all that A thirty G and for everything. We can say, we don't have a problem in this town, we have affordable homes for everybody, and we want to provide it to other towns as well, to Greenwich, to New Canaan, to Stanford. And say, at Easton, I've met with the first selection of Easton, he loves it as well. So you can say, here's fifty homes, here's a hundred homes, and we qualify and we negate all of that mandates that are coming down. There is no real address of the environment in the plan, it's it just sort of gives it a cursory look and talks about a hundred-year storm, we all know that the danger right now is much, much more severe. And we really want to address the environment first, for instance, the landfill. Listen, remember, there's a giant pile of garbage in our front yard down there, the landfill that was done in the sixties and seventies, filled with toxic material. That nobody is willing to address, we need to address that and to address that landfill, and there are ways to address it and to remediate it. And it's not the landfill, I'm not talking about the fill pile, I'm talking about, if everybody knows what I'm talking about, it's the it's the second highest point south of Route One in Fairfield. Right next to Sasko Hill, which is the highest point, next to that is a gigantic landfill where household garbage was thrown during the sixties and seventies. And I promise you, it's filled with a lot of nasty stuff, and it's a danger, I'll tell you this, they put solar panels on top of it. Alright, solar panels, I'm in the, I'm in this industry, they, they, things get very, very hot with glass and mirrors in the ground. Methane and landfills, methane, which is highly, highly combustible, there's not a methane containment system, it's called an M C S that is supposed to be in that landfill, there's not. There is a major, major hazard, I'm telling you, you have solar panels that are creating intense, intense heat on top of combustible gas that is coming up out of that landfill. And that needs to be addressed, I've already talked to the Health and Safety Officer of the Fire Department, and they're aware of it. But we need to actually remove those solar panels immediately, or install an M C S and or and or really mitigate and get rid of the landfill. But I'm telling you now, it's a ju- one day, they're gonna see a giant fireball on the news, and that's gonna be in Fairfield, compounded with. Right over there, where they have the the methane gas flare, carbon flare, methane flare from the sewage treatment plant. Going right there, half a mile away from what I'm talking about right there, so. You're talking about a double danger, because if that goes up and there's a giant explosion, there's gonna be a giant explosion right there.
Or can you stick stick to the P O C D?
Can I ask a question about this landfill issue?
No. No. Not in, has nothing to do with the P O C D right now, so.
The landfill was in the last P O C D, it is germane to Fairfield.
I couldn't, I did a word search, I couldn't see that word, maybe it goes under a different name.
He's still going, eleven. Sorry, I mean.
I know, I understand, and. So those are my things, that's the bad side, I don't want to sit here and sling mud. And and talk about, I want to talk about solutions and things to go, and I know you've worked really hard on this for a long, long time. And I don't want to create any more work for you, what I propose is, I've created a town website, uh, a website where people can contribute and they can work on this very, very hard. And so we can come back to you, I want to have a town referendum and have a lot of input around the first week of November, and we can have a revised draft for you in November and submit it. I think we have to forget about it after the holidays, it has to be done before Thanksgiving. So that's my proposal to you is to really get some serious, serious community input into this plan. And have a a public forum where all sixty thousand residents of Fairfield can really, really give input and have something solid that we can stand behind to give to you, to present to you. As far as timing, I know, the timing, I thought we could submit that as a pilot plan by November. That's how we did in nineteen forty-six, we submitted our town plan, we submitted as a pilot plan. And then next year, during the cisquintennial of Fairfield with two hundred and fifty years, and everybody's really patriotic, we can issue a new plan based on what we've learned from this pilot plan. So we issue a pilot plan now in November, and then next summer during July fourth and everything, we issue a real plan that we love. So the positive things. I told you about affordable homes, I'll talk about health and safety. Our mission number one for any first selectmen, anything in Fairfield is the health and safety of everybody in this town, within town lines. Alright, if we didn't even have a school, if we didn't have a business, if we have anything, if you step foot in these town lines, the health and safety of you is required, your town in Fairfield is responsible for your health and safety. For instance, I think some of these things we don't even address at all, like. The apartments, and all these are rental apartments, and everybody knows, and studies show that if you live in a rental apartment, you'll have a lower quality of life, you have shorter life, you have poorer nutrition, you don't integrate with the community. And you're renting, you're not building up equity, you're not building your home, so we are negligent as a town in permitting other members of the community to live like that. We can revive them with homeownership and get them out of that cycle of renting. I would like to really propose on a major level, if pretend like any of this plan didn't exist, and we go back, because Fairfield honestly is fifty years behind the times. Everything froze with the nineteen seventy-six plan, and we haven't done anything, and times have changed, but nothing else has, Fairfield is still back then. So there's a lot, a lot, a lot of work to be done, and I'm going to say something, these are kind of sweeping things. Uh, picture, for instance, Fairfield Beaches State Park. And unify all five beaches of Fairfield around from Ash Creek and around Jennings, and all the way around, all the way to Sasko and Southport. With adjoining Westport and Bridgeport as well, and coming up Mill River and then converting the Service Plaza to a scenic overlook. So you create permanent protection for all of our waterways going up Mill River, even all the way up to Mill River to Easton, and also where Eastern Reservoir is, and creating Eastern State Park. Which is very popular, if you look at Easton and the Eastern Reservoir. They did a great job, the the trees go right to the water, there's no, it's all passive recreation, so all you have to do is clear out some of the trees. And you can have a beautiful Eastern State Park right there, you can have one, there's a road right up, you can have a road. Uh, a state park for for the public, I guess you could call it, and you could have like a little insider's local state park as well, so you can really make use of Eastern State Park and Fairfield Beaches State Park. And this is really important because this gets into the water and to the utilities, because that's Eastern Reservoir, that's where we all get our river, our water comes down Mill River. And this is really important, I'll I'll close, I think I'll close with this, no, I've got a couple of things, and I can certainly.
How about a, how about a lightning round?
Best I can, sir. I want to reestablish the neighborhoods of Fairfield like I was talking about before, where they've um. Eliminated Blackrock and Tungus and replaced with Commerce Drive, really give power and return to the neighborhoods. Fairfield was built on seven hills, just like Rome, right, Sasko, Sasko, Greenfield, Mill Hill, Osborne, Round Hill, Toilson and Holland. Alright, plus the other two neighborhoods that came in, Jennings, Blackrock, um, Tungus and others. And restore all those and give those people in those neighborhoods real power and real authority, so if you live up in Sport Hill. Sacred Heart reports to you and you tell you what's going on, if you live down in Grasmere, that Circle and wants to do a development, they go to the people of Grasmere. They don't go to other departments and everybody else to get their plans advanced and everybody else know about it, real power to the local people. The infrastructure, nothing has really been addressed with Route One, it's a disaster. You have parallel parking where people open up their car doors right on the street, there's never been an interconnection um with the other, with the tunnels next door. With business, we do a bad job of holding on to businesses here, you can witness Fairfield, General Electric Living, we have to create, especially for Bigelow. To create, make them a model of sustainability and shipping and a modern packaging in America. To really create um the Bigelow Innovation Group over there and um. So we can secure there for the long term, because they already have one foot out the door. And they already have a factory in Milford, if we don't really make it worth their while and make them the stars of the show, Bigelow will leave. And there's, there's more to talk about as far as like really getting into. And there's, there's more to talk about as far as like really getting into Commerce Drive. Really what that should be done is reconvert it back to what it is. If you look at a map, it's State Street. It's State Street that comes down from Bridgeport and a State Street extension. So I recommend, we're gonna just ditch and get rid of Commerce Drive altogether, rename it State Street to recapture that grandeur of State Street. And three things we put in there. Auto Land, which are the cars that are already there, the car dealers, we make, we make it every car that can ever be made. We solve problems for the car, car dealers have a huge problem, and that's cars. They're everywhere, they don't know what to do with them. We dig and we have underground parking, which makes us secure and has valets and doesn't worry about their insurance parks, and we create a giant auto, auto land there. In addition, we, uh, combine it with pizza, move Sally's out of there, the world's most uninviting pizzeria down the road to where Pepe's is. And then we incorporate that with the Ash Creek entrance of Fairfield Beaches State Park. So all that is Ash Creek, and then it goes down to where the Black Rock Train Station is, that's all part of Ash Creek, and it goes on up and around that, so all that will be connected and, and, um, protected. I'm talking about adding somewhere between one and three thousand acres of open space.
Is your material submitted, or is it, has it been emailed in, or?
I mean, honestly, I've emailed you guys so many times and so many things.
Referring tonight?
I can, I can send whatever you want, I thought I could send you this, I send you the site that I built. I could send, um, all these notes and all these plans and all the pictures.
Great.
Anything you want. Thank you all for your service, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in person?
Good evening.
Hello. Uh, do you need name, address?
Name and address, please, yes.
Uh, Laura Vettman, one oh six Blue Ridge Road. I come here today because I'm thrilled to see that the education part was, was recognized in the latest draft. Although I do want to point out that Figure Twenty-Six does have schools incorrectly labeled and where they are located. Specifically, if you look at where Sherman is, I think you'll be able to identify it. However, as the parent of two McKinley students, I urge you to consider how the P O C D conflicts with the plan goals to provide, as it says in the plan, excellent education to serve the diversity of the residents of Fairfield. The first priority listed is a commitment to preserve Fairfield's single-family residential neighborhoods, balanced with an obligation to diversify housing options at all price points by identifying opportunities for mixed use with residential and commercial quarters with a particular focus in the Fairfield Black Rock Train Station Commerce Drive area. The concentration of the multifamily units in this area has been and continues to be an issue for McKinley. M P Planning shared in their ten-year projection file that sixty-three percent of the recently built multifamily units are in the McKinley School District. As of Fall twenty-five, this added forty-eight students of Fairfield Public Schools, and McKinley alone had thirty-seven students added to the enrollment in the last two years. As of January twenty-fifth, there are an additional sixty-one percent of housing units approved or under construction in McKinley School District. Latest enrollment projections, which take into account these new builds, show that we will run out of space in McKinley by two thousand and twenty-eight. The education system in Fairfield is one that the town takes great pride in, and it's a reason that many moved to this town. Fairfield Public Schools employs over fifteen hundred staff, accounts for sixty percent of our town budget. So how can we connect the evolving housing developments with the impact that it's putting on our schools or bring awareness to the additional capacity needs in our school district? Thank you.
Thank you. You're the member of the public, and, yep. Evening.
Evening. Good evening, Sean McCabe, I live at three eight four five Park Avenue, Unit Two. I'm gonna be very brief, I just want to say first, thank you all so much. I know that an inordinate amount of time and effort has been made by each and every one of you, both individually and in reaching out to the public to create this plan. Uh, recognizing that the P O C D is a plan and a blueprint, but it is not the details of what will come after it. And so in that regard, I want to urge the Commission to please pass this version of the TPZ's P O C D. I know that we have, one, our much-desired moratorium, there's a lot of work to be done to actually implement a lot of the details that we're hearing other public members, um, articulate. And, um, the sooner we get the blueprint down, the sooner I know you all will get to the hard work and as will our Town Planning and Development Department to create the Fairfield that we want, so urging Commission to, please, let's get this done, thank you.
Thank you. You're the member in person at least. I give in-person priority, we can turn to, uh, those joining us remotely, if anybody else wants to do it in person, let me know.
Mr. Sherman, I have nobody in the chat, but if you want to.
Let me, I, I should have said this in the beginning, if anybody in the chat, well, chat, anybody that's joining us remotely wishes to be heard, if you can please identify yourself, uh, there's a raise hand function on Zoom at the bottom of the toolbar. Can they sign into chat, can they sign into chat without being, okay, or the other option is to sign in in the chat, here we go, we got somebody.
You do.
Um, this Halaran will get you going in a second, but anybody else who's joining us remotely and wishes to be heard, if you can please identify yourself in the chat, uh, your name, um, that way we can, uh, allow you to speak, uh, otherwise if you don't get acknowledged by us, you'll not be able to unmute yourself and speak.
So Halaran, you're ready to go, you're unmuted.
I am here, hi, how are you? So first, I'd like to acknowledge all of the efforts of the TPZ, because I know you have a really hard volunteer job.
Ma'am, if you could just give us your address, please, that's all, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
My address is forty-four Limburg Court, Fairfield, Connecticut, oh six eight two four. I live off of South, off of the Post Road near Fairfield Place and South Pine. And, and, and as, as the committee knows, we have been through hell with all of you between Spot On, between what's going on with Sunshine, hopefully we will prevail in court. I just think that you guys need to think about, like, the fact that our neighbors have told you not to extend the Post Road development. We have a vibrant Post Road here, we have a strip mall, we have two great restaurants. We have a gas station, a service station that's lovely. We don't need any more development, I don't know why you are doing this to us. I don't know why you are taking away our neighborhoods, the neighborhoods of hundreds of people here be, be, between the Post Road and maybe Northfield, Southfield. And I don't understand, I don't understand, like, why we are targeted. And like, how come this is happening to us and we have to spend thousands of dollars on lawyers? And we don't want to do this, guys, we just want to have like a happy, happy life. So like, think about this, we sent you videos about safety, about like small streets here with buildings that are going up wrong, right? If you do the P O C D, we're gonna have no zoning laws anymore. They can put anything they want up here, there's gonna be like, like a four-foot, four-foot, four, four-story place all over my neighbors' houses, right? There's gonna be no airspace, the kids are not gonna be able to play in the street. We have Saint Anthony's here, Saint Anthony's is a vibrant part of our life. And like, they park in the street and we love them. So like, why are you like ruining our life and like making us like, like a city when we don't want to be, we're a suburban place. We are suburban family community. And like, it's a mismatch with the neighborhood. Everything that's going on, especially the sunshine stuff, like, it's not harmonious. We have to deal with this now, and we will deal with it. By the way, there's like a pile of neighbors that are gonna deal with it. But how come, how come you guys are doing this to us and not hearing us? That's what I want to know, and of course, this is not a forum for you to answer my questions, unfortunately. Although I'd love to have a meeting with you or a coffee and see why this is happening, especially with some of you guys who are just building all the time and not thinking about what that does to our, our neighborhoods and how you treat people. How you treat people on your own zoning board, you just cut them off. It's terrible. So I'm just gonna say, like, I don't get it. It's not the life I wanted here, moving to Fairfield thirty years ago. And I'm hoping that you will think about your constituents and what they have indicated to you over the last years, years and years of dealing with you guys about like development here in our little tiny corner of the world, Fairfield Place, Limburg Court, Old Fields, Nor, Northfield, all of our neighborhoods. Please think about like what you're doing to us, and I don't understand why.
Thank you.
Did you submit a letter? I thought I got a letter from her today.
I, I sent a letter today, I also sent a letter in November, I, I'm definitely an active person in terms of like understanding what's going on in the world, and I, I just, I never get any feedback. It's sort of a, a weird situation, I get that. I'm not sure why the TPZ is like building up this beautiful, lovely neighborhood that has like actually improved since the thirty years I've lived here. And like, like, people just like, like, basically give us the finger. And just say, whatever, we're just gonna do what we want to do, we don't care what you think. And I'm done with that, I'm like kind of done, and like, the sunshine thing is a very big problem. Just so you know, and like, we have a pile of people working on that, and like, why did you do that to us? When you like took, you said Bureau was not safe, it's the same thing over here. It's like, like, I feel like there's like a mismatch about like whatever's happening in the moment. So let, let's just say that I'm asking you please to leave our neighborhood alone. We have a vibrant commercial corridor, we have restaurants, we have gas stations, we have a strip mall. And we like where we live, don't please throw something on top of us.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, um, Darren Whackerman.
Whackerman.
Okay, hi, I had to unmute, sorry. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, if you could just give your address, please.
One ninety-two Shoreham Village Drive. Um, I do want to thank you guys, because I know you've been working like insanely the last, you know, so far this year because of all the eight thirty G applications, and I don't envy you, thank you for doing that. Um, but I am a little bit following up on Mary's comments. Um, I was very involved in the opposition to the circle development, the two, the two applications. And I have to say, we all felt like we were not heard, sort of we were dismissed as NIMBY, even though really what we were asking for was just a little bit more planning and a little bit more of a gradual connection to what had already existed and the fact that there are houses all around this enormous planned building. So I would like to ask if, A, if the, if the, as a result of approving this, when you're doing zoning regulations, you consider that it may be on a busy street, whatever's proposed, but it's surrounded by homes of people. And, and we need to be heard. We really didn't feel like we were heard, I, I think I'm speaking for my neighbors in saying this. Um, it felt like we were dismissed, and I think that, um, I see other towns, the TPZ sometimes try to negotiate with the builder and say, hey, can you maybe cut down a story or pull it in a little bit, because it's, it's very big or something like that. But it just feels like everything gets approved, even if it's not eight thirty G. And, um, maybe that's not fair of me to say, but that's my impression. So I'd like to ask if going forward, not only the zoning regulations could take into account the fact that there are others, other neighbors besides the busy road that you may be seeing, uh, the front of the development from, and that those neighbors have a right to comment and to maybe ask for some changes. Um, I, I, I don't have patience with people who don't want any development because that's not realistic. And I can say I speak for my neighbors when we are, we're okay with a development there. Um, but it just needs to be reasonable and some, and respectful of the people around it, and I don't think that's been happening. So I'd like to ask that, that both regulations, um, reflect that and that we start to feel a little more heard and respected and not just dismissed as NIMBY, which is really what it feels like. Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have anyone else in the chat at this moment?
Make, make up. If there's anybody joining us remotely who's not signing into the chat, or can you please, who we got?
Oh, I have, um, RTM Representative.
Isma?
Hi, yes, good evening, it's Elizabeth Zesima. Um, I live at one sixty Fairfield Woods Road, uh, Unit twenty-two to be exact, in Fairfield. And I am also a District Four Representative on the RTM. I want to thank you guys for all the work that's gone into this. Um, it is long overdue, and I don't say that as a criticism, but of course, you know, it's been a long time coming. And I know, I know what kind of, you know, work went into it. And I understand the frustration of this town dealing with eight thirty G, which was a, absolutely a lack of planning. You know, we could have avoided eight thirty G, and it's not, of course, the people sitting at this table I'm talking to necessarily, but in the thirty-six years since that statute was enacted, you know, we found ourselves not creating the housing on our own terms that we needed. And so now we have an opportunity, and this P O C D is, is a, you know, big piece of that. Um, I would urge you to pass it, but we have an opportunity to, in the next three and a half years now, we already have lost half a year, um, to extend that moratorium, but more importantly, to create the housing that, uh, our workers need. We want our firefighters and our police officers and our teachers and our residents' children to be able to live here. We cannot have any economic development. Or even to stabilize our taxes without addressing housing, and it's challenging. I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to make it sound like there, there's an easy button somewhere that we needed to push. So I very much appreciate this, um, effort. I hope that we can do something with C M D A, which is not what's on the docket tonight, but we need to take advantage of all opportunities, uh, to create housing, and I, I really appreciate that, um, a vote in favor of this, uh, P O C D would move us forward. And I think part of it would be also approving the TOD Plan, that's already, I think, somewhere, um, from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, but at any rate, uh, I just want to say thank you again and, um, encourage you to pass this.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public joining remotely that wishes to be heard? Again, you need to either identify yourself in the chat or raise your digital hand using the raise hand function at the bottom of the toolbar. Any member of the public that in person that wishes to be heard? Not hearing anything, as I said, um, I think we'll take public comments and writing up until Friday. If anybody listens to this and they want to get final comments.
Can you hear what you're saying, taking comments what?
We'll take, we'll allow public comment to come in via email by, till Friday at five P M.
May I make a comment about that?
Sure.
I think we should take a vote on how long, because I don't think there's any statutory deadline of closing off comment, this is not patient for development, this is our planning function. And I know Harbor Management is planning on submitting comments, uh, next week after the next meeting. So, and also, I don't have any of the letters that were submitted, I could not find them on the website. So I'd like to have a chance to read letters that were submitted and have members of the public that might be watching have time to submit. And I don't see any reason to put a deadline of Friday, is there, I don't know what the reason would be.
Reason is, I could, I was giving a courtesy. Um, we have public comment on tonight for the hearing, obviously, we're not gonna have rebuttal because it's ourselves. Um, so I was given a courtesy, uh, in lieu of just closing the hearing tonight.
Why don't we close a hearing, this is our planning function. There's no statutory legal right of anyone to sue us if we don't close the hearing or if we do close the hearing.
In order to have an executive, uh, potential voter executive session, I need to close the hearing.
We don't, well, that's not, there's no deadline on that either.
I, I have, I have discussed this consistently throughout the year, about the planning, especially when it came to this calendar year as to where we were in spring, what the plan was going forward. And now it are public comments, it is that public comment is done. I am about to, so. Sir, I'm not, you can, anything in writing you can submit, but hoping right now or.
I have a question. Until November, why are we accelerating the deadline?
It's up to the Commission.
It's due in November. I mean, you don't have time for public input. We're just giving you input now and you're gonna say it was closed on Friday. You have two months.
We have one year, actually.
So this is what I'm doing. I'm closing the public comments. There's public comment.
Hold on.
One member online.
May I be heard, please? I've not finished my comment. We have not heard from harbor management. They wrote a letter today that I haven't seen yet because it's not on the website. They said they will get back to us after their next meeting, which is next week. I'd like to know where all the letters are that were submitted that I haven't seen yet.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I don't know why you're getting fired up.
I'd like to know. We have another commission that's going to give us comments, not by Friday.
So the Harbor Management Commission, specifically in their letter, they reference state statute.
May I be heard? I can't hear you. Please speak a little louder. Thank you.
Let me, let me go closer.
Please, sorry.
All right, I'll get down. But this should be open till November. Don't close it now.
We have somebody new. Oh, he just came in. Yeah, well, after, or is there somebody that's online?
There is. Another RTM member, Bob Elwinger.
We'll get to, Ms. Harrigan is gonna address something with harbor management. A gentleman just walked in.
Other letters, I've gotten by email, but they're not posted.
Gentleman just walked in and there's somebody online.
There's harbor management. There you go.
Thank you.
So are you a member of the public, Kevin? Wish to be heard on this?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
I was gonna say the guy from the
Oh, I'm sorry. I always, my, my, I always go to people in person first, so let's start with that. No, come on up.
Okay, cool.
Just, it's been my MO, so.
Um, so my name's Peter Saccardi. I'm a resident. I live over in one sixty-five One Posh Drive. I have read through the T O B, T O, P O C D. And while I do think that there are a lot of very positive elements within it, I am quite a bit concerned about what I view as conflicting priorities within the P O C D. On the one hand, there seems to be the priority of actually increasing the affordable housing within town, increasing development. But on the other hand, there's also a lot of provisions about maintaining existing single-family zoning, maintaining existing neighborhoods. And I don't, based on what I was reading through the P O C D, I don't think that both are simultaneously possible. Especially if we are excluding some of the largest neighborhoods in town from potential rezoning and from updates to their current single-family zoning or from updates to their current minimum acre sizes. Kind of Fairfield's increasingly unaffordable. I grew up here. I graduated from Fairfield Ward High School. Not a single person that I know who I grew up with and who I graduated with can afford to buy any kind of property in this town, let alone rent in this town. I lived in Boston for two years after college and rental prices there were lower than what the average median rental price was in the P O C D. The fact that homes are currently on average more than half a million dollars in this town makes it inaccessible to most people. Like I'm an engineer, like I have a decently good paying job and it's still unaffordable for someone like me to live here without staying with parents. So I would really like to push the board to consider rezoning areas such as the triple A and double A zoning in town. Limiting our expansion of zoning and our changing of zoning just to the areas that already have pre-existing high density is also contributing to the kind of diversity problems that we're having in the Fairfield Public Schools. The fact that we have to consider redistricting as a result of the lack of diversity is directly attributable to the fact that some of the only affordable developments are happening all kind of concentrated in the same areas of town. And rather than diversifying the type of housing that we have across town, we seem to be consolidating it into both the commercial areas and the areas that we already have zoned at higher density. So I personally like take objection to the idea of maintaining existing neighborhoods as are because it's, it's counterproductive towards the goal of actually providing housing in town. What we need is a significantly larger supply of housing in Fairfield in order to actually lower prices rather than a handful of units going up every single year when we already see the population drastically increasing year over year. Like we need to be providing more housing year over year than the number of people who are trying to move into this town or new residents in this town. And unless we're able to surpass the increasing population with increasing unit supply, we're going to continue to see prices increase across town. I would like to see a town where if at the minimum, children of residents can afford to stay in the same town that they grew up in. I, I view it as a serious problem that the only way for anyone to afford to stay here after graduating college, regardless of the industry that they go into, is either to work in finance exclusively or to inherit a house from their parents, which is not a realistic expectation for most people. Thank you for my talk.
Thank you very much. And who joined us remotely?
First off, we have Bob Elwinger and in second, we have Diana Cummings, so.
Mr. Elwinger.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Bob Elwinger. I live at eighty-five Sassa Pequon Road. I've been a resident of Fairfield for over fifty-seven years. Currently, I'm on the RTM representing District Three and I'm a former member of the Town Affordable Housing Committee. And I fully support the current P O C D draft. I urge you not to delay any more in adopting it. I viewed so many of your meetings over the past, what seems like many years, and I really want to commend the Commissioners and the planning staff for the painstaking way that you've deliberated over this document, this draft, every goal, strategy and recommendation. I am very impressed with how the draft recommendations are couched in very exploratory terms. And throughout the document, consistently referring to recommendations to consider or examine or review and explore. Nowhere in this draft do I find any mandates for high-density development or for prioritizing tall oversized apartment buildings at the expense of the town's character. I don't find any mandates for development that would unduly tax our current infrastructure. And I really appreciate the fact that many of the P O C D strategies or recommendations mirror those found in the town's current affordable housing plan. I want to commend you for the way the current draft highlights local policy priorities for future federal and state grant funding applications. This is especially important today when it's increasingly challenging to find suitable grants to even apply for. So again, just to close, I feel that this draft P O C D effectively articulates the priorities for public and private investment in the town for the next ten years. And then it will be a better guide through a thorough review and meaningful enhancements to our local zoning regs. So I, again, I urge you to drop, adopt the draft and thank you very much for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Second individual, I forgot her name.
I think they said Capos.
Mr. Mullin, who was second, sorry.
Uh, we have, I just asked Ms. Cummings, Diana Cummings, to
Dina?
Yes, Dina, thank you. That's okay. Thank you, Commission, for all your hard work on the P O C D. I agree with a lot of it. I did have some problems with the word barrier as referring to zoning regulations. I don't see them as barriers for affordable housing. I see them as protections in our town for health and safety and also the feel of the neighborhoods. I also, in the P O C D housing section, it cited a study that said that thirty percent of renters' income goes to their rent. I would like to submit, which I did in a letter, that fifty percent of my income goes to property taxes, which has not been addressed in the current draft of the P O C D. Although there is a need for housing, they think single-family homes are preferable in a town like Fairfield rather than large apartment buildings where only twenty percent of the units are going to be affordable. You're creating eighty percent inventory at market price value. Currently, they're going to be coming up just the approved eight thirty Gs. There are going to be two thousand apartments for rent, which could go anywhere between three and four thousand dollars. That is not affordable. That's, you know, fifty thousand dollars and you're also adding, if two people per apartment, you're gonna add four thousand people, maybe six thousand if there's three, you know, so on and so on. And that doesn't really address these eighty percent of market rate apartments being built. Does, has nothing to do with affordable housing. It doesn't, it doesn't help in any way. Perhaps we could look into adding to the P O C D some help for seniors with a better plan for tax relief programs. Perhaps in, uh, increasing the income levels, uh, which you are required to have by the town, which are really, really low to be able to get tax relief and more incentives for first-time homeowners. What I'm seeing is a trend to going towards a city instead of a town. And as I was reminded when I went to the Little League gathering on Sherman Green, it, Fairfield is a town. It's like a Norman Rockwell painting. It was so wonderful to be there and it will be sad to see it go when it does if there are going to be large high-rises destroying our neighborhoods. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Can I just please have your address for the record?
Hang on, I'm muted.
Sorry, we muted you. Hold on.
I think it's six hundred feet Fairfield Beach Road. She did send an email.
Oh, she sent an email? Okay, never mind then. All right. I don't see anybody new. Any member of the public joining us remotely wish to be heard? Please raise your digital hand with the raise hand function at the bottom of the toolbar or sign it in the chat. So I have the letter from the harbor managements. I mean, we can, in addition to leaving public comment open till Friday, we can leave it open for this too, so.
Are there other copies of that?
It's, it's, um, so if you are looking in the agenda for tonight.
Yeah. I was in the file tonight.
And so if you go to that folder for this draft, the July thirtieth draft, there's an additional folder in there that says public comment, um, public comments. And those are the ones that we've received after the release of the July thirtieth draft.
I can't find that public comment. I couldn't find any of the document, any of the things that were filed.
I just see public comments in the public comment folder.
They're old.
There should be a folder in there. Oh, for the agenda. Do you go to the agenda date?
I just went right to the folder.
I went to the July thirtieth.
I just went to the P O C D.
You go to the September, the September ninth agenda? Oh, actually. Sorry, it might be in the Oh, so if you go to the dates, so go to
September ninth?
It's, yeah, it's in the September.
September ninth, P O C D.
Public comments.
I, I gave you the wrong link. I'm sorry. I did. That was my fault. I'll, I'll drop it into that folder as well. My apologies. But it is.
We don't, we shouldn't have to go through the agenda. We should be able to just go to the website, right?
You can. You can.
Yeah.
And it's under the department, not the government. It's under the department zoning, not the commission zoning.
It was under the agenda for this date, so I'll make sure that it's
There's only one website that has documents, right?
It's, yes, but there, it, it can be in different folders, so I'll make sure that the folders are the same. I'm sorry.
Harris, Commissioner Harrison and then Commissioner Randolph, sorry.
Yeah, real quick. Again, thank you for everybody who came out tonight. Very appreciative of folks who gave out your opinion. Obviously matters to us. I know perfection, it can be the enemy of progress and I know that we really want to adopt this. It's been, you know, some time in the making. I would just like to see if we could maybe perhaps on a Saturday via Zoom, we could just have in the next few weeks have a some like office hours or a public hearing with parents because Board of Ed meets tonight. And there's always this conflict where Board of Ed parents can't, can't come. I know I've spoken to many members of P-Tech and, you know, other groups and they really do want to have a voice. Some have written letters in the last several months, but I think if we could, you know, give that opportunity to that stakeholder group, I think that would be really helpful. I know for me. I know we had a parent here tonight who came here with her young daughter. So that's something the commission would entertain. I would, I would be grateful and I'm sure it would help all of us. I do appreciate that we do want to, you know, pass this sooner rather than later. So, thank you.
Well, whether we pass it or not is a kind of, it's, we, we need to have the executive session to determine that because we may not for whatever reason. So I mean.
Well, then can maybe in between that now and then, we can maybe have that opportunity to, to open the door. It doesn't have to just be for parents, for people who couldn't make it.
I mean, that was, that was the thought of the additional time to submit public comments so we can gather. I mean, I, I don't, I, I'm not going to be coming on a Saturday.
I mean, with everything else. I don't like more to finance. They do it during budget season. I'm not, I'm making it up. It doesn't have to be a Saturday.
I get it. I mean, I just, with everything going on and how long this has been going on, I mean, if the commission decides to do it, fine, I guess, but I, I'm not, I don't know. You had a question.
Yeah, mine, mine was much more tactical. Mr. Mullin, could you just send out the link to the, with the full file?
You speak up a little bit?
I was asking Mr. Mullin if he could send the link to the, to, to the updated file for those of us who didn't get it.
The updated P O C D?
No, no.
Yeah, just the
The link that's in the agenda, does it hit the right file? I was asking if he could send
Yes, yes, yes.
Isn't there only one file that has documents in it? Because I could not find
There's, there's multiple, there's multiple files.
Does the public get them if they don't? So we have to do an updated agenda now or?
No, it, no, it's fine. The P O C D is in there. The public comments are for you as the commission.
The comments are for the public too. I mean, they're out there. It's a public-facing website.
But I just saw it. It's, it's on there. It just, it wasn't on the agenda properly.
I couldn't find any comments.
Well, it's, I mean, I just, I'm looking at it, so.
On the website.
I'm looking at it with Tom, so.
The document or the folder?
The folder with the letters. We, we received about letters, including the one that I just provided to you from the Harbor Commission. I did want to speak to the Harbor Commission's letter because state statute as well as town charter allows them to comment on referrals related to real property within their jurisdictional review. So we accept their comments on the P O C D, certainly. But I think in the past, there was erroneously some information that was provided to the Harbor Commission that indicated if they gave us a negative referral, that you would need a super majority to pass the P O C D. I checked with our town attorney, that is incorrect. So this is not, you know, and I would say that currently within our P O C D, we are not proposing significant changes to the residential R-three zone, the residential triple A zone, or the residential double A zone, which are the properties that are located within the Harbor Commission's jurisdictional review area. I also indicated to the Harbor Commission, there have been recent changes to state statute, which now require increased review by this commission for coastal site plan applications. And so that will capture some of the applications that, that didn't previously go to the Plan and Zoning Commission, including those that might also go to the Harbor Commission in this area. So I feel like there's even increased scrutiny for those properties based on state statute changes within the area of the Harbor Commission's jurisdiction.
I have a question because they wrote a letter, a four-page memo a year ago and they asked us to insert some language into the P O C D. Now, maybe this is not the time to talk about that, but I, I didn't see it in there and I was wondering if we did put any reference to their, they have a twenty-page document called Coastal Vision for our whole five-mile coastline, not just Southport Harbor. And I couldn't find it in there and I'm wondering if, if we did put reference to the Coastal Vision plan in there that, that they came up with. That's on the Harbor Management's website.
I think that's something you should ask. Well, I, I think you can ask her that at another time. I mean, certainly call her tomorrow and to go over that kind of stuff. I mean, right now we're in, we were, we are in public comments. I've kind of given the impression that I think we should be, you know, concluding public comment, pending written responses from harbor management, which I guess next week, which is fine. You want to extend the public comments to match harbor management's date of September, September sixteenth. That's when they say they're going to get it to us, I believe, right?
I think they said after the sixteenth.
About a week from Tuesday, are we, from tonight?
I think their meeting is on the sixteenth. I don't have it in front of me.
What I would say is this, my thought is unless the commission wants to do something else, add an extra planning session in here or date, uh, public comment date. I mean, I think written submissions are always good. I think we're saying we get them in by, if you want to do next, this Friday or next Friday, I think that's fine. And then see where we are in our two weeks. I think this is potentially up for I think that's fine. Um, and then see where we are in our two weeks. I think this is potentially up for executive session to see where we are.
For the nineteenth, that would be the closing of public comment for letters.
If that, I think that's okay if we wanted to potentially have an executive session on the twenty-third.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We have, um, someone who spoke already in the chat who'd like to see again our use.
I'm not doing a second part. I mean, that's, that's how I would go. This, this has been outstanding for two years. I think we have engaged with the public significantly. Even if there wasn't a planning session scheduled, we've been getting comments in consistently in those two and plus years. And if this commission wants to have more time, that's fine, but that's a decision I think we need to discuss in our executive session. So, you know, that's my plan. That's what I would like to do right now unless there's a massive consensus against me, right? Or a consensus against me.
So just to be clear, all public comment must be in by Friday, the nineteenth of September?
Well, for now, I mean, again, that was a, because we're going to be looking at potential executives. Well, we're going to be looking at an executive session on the twenty-third.
Is that a voting executive session then?
It could be. It could be taking it up to adopt, to reject, to table, to have more planning sessions. It could be anything that the commission wants, but I think it's time to at least have the potential to walk in an executive session.
Sounds good.
Okay, so not hearing a consensus against me, that's what we're going to do. Okay? Thank you, everyone. That being the assignment, I'll conclude, I'll conclude the hearing and adjourn the meeting.
Sure.